Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Justice for all. Okay, Mrs. Mayor, if you do the roll call, please.
Yes, just click and wait here. Oh, thank you. Um, Joe Gittens?
Here.
Cheryl Hancock?
Here.
Anita Jagazinski?
Here.
Kate Nera?
I'm here. Tim Menninger?
Here.
Colin Truffett?
He is excused.
Thank you.
Lisa Collins?
Here.
And Gary Dunlop?
Here.
Okay, with seven of seven school board members present, I would declare a quorum. Approval of the agenda. I would note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as published. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Motion passes. Public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board relative to any item at this time? We ask that a five-minute time limit per person be followed. Please come forward, state your name, address, and topic to be addressed. And you're welcome to come to the microphones there. Well, seeing no one rush the microphones, we'll move on then to recognition and thank you. Awards presentation to Carrie Burgum. Bob Behr.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bob.
Carrie is at the Dell's. She has a niece that's playing in the state softball, state all-star softball tournament, so that's why she's not here. But it was about a year ago that we needed a yearbook advisor, and it worked within our schedule to have Ms. Burgum do it. I had to twist her arm a little bit. She was not really excited about it, but with her photography skills and besides foreign language, she also has an English degree, so it fit right within her skills and actually her interests. And here's what happened. Just before we had our Renaissance Assembly in the middle of May, I received from Dave Bellin from Johnston's that Carrie Burgum had been awarded the National Yearbook Program of Excellence. In order to get this award, the following had to be met. More than 50% of students were covered in the book three times or more. A distribution location and date entered by December 1st needed to be submitted to Johnston's. The school needed to have a 70% buy rate based on the 2012 enrollment. Final determination was based on number of copies ordered. And then she also had to reach home to parents at least three times in various methods throughout the school year. Her cover and end sheets needed to be submitted by November 1st for spring delivery to schools, and she met all of the scheduled page deadlines for the yearbook. And as Dave put, as you can see, this is no small, small task. And he was at the Renaissance Assembly and presented Carrie with an award the day of the Assembly. So congratulations to Ms. Carrie Burgum, and she is back to do this again next year. So when you see her, tell her thanks and congratulations.
We tell her the same on behalf of the Board of Education, Bob. We really appreciate, we see her pictures all the time, and they're wonderful, so thank you very much for sharing them.
Great. Then Holman Middle School eighth grader Diana Murphy presents a check to Mary Fitzpatrick, Director of the Lacrosse Warming Center. And Mr. Vogler is going to help with that.
Mary? Okay, I didn't see her here. Mary, she had said that she was hoping she could be here, but with her job, sometimes things do come up working there. So Diane, come on over here. This was a special event for us. Diane came to us, and this, this year, she kind of had a special connection to the Warming Center.
If she could turn the other way, just so the folks back home get to see her.
And, and with that, she came to us and asked if we could do something to help the Warming Center out. And so we went back and forth and talked about quite a few different ideas, and we came up with an idea of having a penny wars with the eighth grade class. And we were hoping to raise a little bit of money to help these, this organization out. And Diane is going to reveal tonight our grand total, and just say a little bit about that.
So I asked like the whole eighth grade class if we could, like, have a penny wars or whatever, and it was for like four days, and we raised a thousand dollars as just one eighth grade class. And I'm gonna donate it to the Warming Center. And my mom passed away a couple months ago, and she used to go to the Warming Center. And I just feel that I wanted to get something good out of her passing away, so I thought I would just start something to donate to the Warming Center. And if Mary was here, but I would thank her, like, for the things that she does for that place and for all the homeless people and everything. It just, like, means a lot to me that somebody can be so kind and have, like, eliminate their time to, like, pay extra attention to people who need help and everything, so, yeah, thank you.
Please know that the school district of Holman is very proud of your efforts and the young lady that you are, and thank you so much for sharing your story and for sharing your good deeds. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will mail this to Mary at the Warming Center tomorrow so that she gets this into her hands.
Okay, then moving on to reports and discussion. District activities, boys and girls hockey, funding. Dr. Carlson.
At the last board meeting, you remember Mark Engler presenting on this issue, and at that time, I had even made a comment to the board that most likely we would just be moving forward with the funding plan and that the board would not be asked to take action. Upon further reflection, I think it would be appropriate for the board to speak on this issue, take an, take action on this. And so we have put together, Mr. Engler has put together an issue paper for you that's in your packet, related to the, the modifications or changes occurring with the funding for our both boys and girls hockey, which he explained last time. So this would be something, there's nothing in addition to add to his presentation, but this would be something that we would be coming back then and asking you to take action at the June 24th board meeting. So, a little change from what we said last time, but I think it would be appropriate. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to do my best, or at least pass them on to Mr. Engler as we move forward with this. But you can expect this to come back at the next board meeting.
Are there any questions or comments? I think the only question I had, and maybe it's a comment question, is that as a result of this experience or this event, is there going to be, by the Activities Department, maybe a philosophical discussion about having our co-op agreements be more, what is the word, consistent and similar so that we don't run into this again? Is there some action going to take place related to that?
I can't respond specifically. If there's a specific action planned, I do know that within our sport, our activity areas, again, this is, and I think some of you had a question, this is not necessarily an issue across different activities as much as this specific issue is addressing an issue within an activity in which both boys and girls participate. That's what this specifically is addressing. And I think your question is, is an appropriate one. I don't have a response as far as a specific plan addressing that, other than we are very sensitive and aware, especially when it becomes equal opportunities for our students, both male and female, and that, this is one example of addressing an issue we believe needs to be addressed at this time.
Any other questions?
Otherwise, it will be under the consent agenda. People's services, physical therapy contracted services, Mrs. Krakow.
Well, and I mentioned to Julie that she can stay where she's seated unless there are questions. This is something that is routinely, routinely brought to the board. Actually, we've done it, the last time was three years ago because it's been on a three-year agreement. And so you have it before you. This is, again, for our physical therapy services. We contract these, and we've been working with the same provider for a number of years. And so we are satisfied with that, and we would ask your consideration of approval of this again at the June 24th board meeting. If you have questions, Julie would be happy to come on up and respond to those questions.
Are there any questions?
I think as Dr. Carlson had indicated in our weekly board packet, this issue and the one that's coming next, we've had some discussion about purchase services, that the bidding process is very clear about when we purchase items or equipment or those kind of things, and that may be not so clear on purchased services end of the arena. So I think Dr. Carlson is walking to the back, but that is something I think you're going to be studying next year and evaluating, and will probably come out of the Finance Committee. So that would move us then to the next business services, interim business office administrator contracted services. Mr. Clark.
As you know, Mr. Austin will be leaving us, and to do a thorough advertising, recruitment, and search, as well as selection of his replacement, we anticipate it will not be until early September that we'll have a person to fill that position. That's if everything goes as planned. There is a critical timeframe during the summer months regarding audit, annual meeting, annual report filing, as well as a number of other report filings with DPI, as well as the ongoing operations of the business office. There'll also be some transitions related to the employee handbook and activities done in the business office. We feel this is a critical time, a time where we need someone, although not full-time, with the expertise to help guide us through those activities. And therefore, you see a recommendation to contract with Behr, Behr's Financial Services Organization that provides these services. We looked at numerous other options, an interview, did reference checks. I believe this is the best option for us to pursue for interim business administrator services. Are there any questions?
And to again emphasize that we are asking your consideration for approval this evening, so it is on the consent agenda.
So are there any questions, Mr. Menninger?
Just two quick questions. What would be the period of this contract? It would start when?
The contract would start tomorrow, if approved tonight, and we have arranged for the contract to go until September 15th. Tomorrow being, Jason's already hoping that the board would approve this, schedule the meeting with the individual to come down this week so that that person is not coming in completely cold, is acquainted with the office, where Jason keeps electronic files, processes that we use. So we've set up a little bit of transition on the front and tail end.
And then the second question is, I'm assuming this means Mr. Austin has not changed his mind.
You'd have to ask him.
I do have his email address and his new street address. Feel free to just contact if anybody needs it.
I just want to, I did communicate to the board over a week ago about, really, the direction was we were just going to move forward, but I, I do feel that it is appropriate to bring this to you, but again, ask your consideration for approval this evening.
So no other questions?
No.
And I think the indication is, on the position is September 1st, they'd like to hire, and that would be two weeks with the person in place. So then the next item is business services, health insurance recommendation, and I would just note that we had a request. Someone came in late after public participation, and it would be up to the boards. I guess I would look to the board for approval to allow Brenda to speak. She would like to just have her opportunity to speak, or if that's okay with everybody, if there's a consensus, she'd like to...
Sure, yes.
Okay. So we'll, we will do that now, Brenda, if you want to come forward, and then we'll move into the health insurance, and I suspect the two items are related, so.
Thank you very much, members of the school board.
If you would give your name and address, sorry, Brenda.
My name is Brenda Peterson. I wear many hats. I am a parent of children who have gone through and also children who are currently going through the Holman School District. Holman resident taxpayer, employee of the Holman School District, going on year 18. I'm also the president of the Hope Union for the Holman Secretaries Group. And I'm here tonight to talk to the board regarding something that's pretty near and dear to me, and I know a lot of people, and it's the matter of health insurance. That was one of the key factors that I took my job with the school district of Holman. I had my own business, but I was soon to become a single mother, and not growing up with health insurance, that was going to be a priority of what I gave my family. And the health insurance that Holman offered its employees was outstanding. So I was very happy to be able to give that to my family and also a wage that paid the bills. I participated in Mr. Clark's Insurance Review Committee. We were shown a lot of information. We were shown information regarding what some private employers offer their employees for health insurance, also the direction that some of the local school districts have gone with their employee health insurance. We discussed some of the things that were important to employers, some of the things that were important to employees. We realized there were some similar things. Mr. Clark shared with us the direction towards wellness, and that is very important in trying to maintain a, a good staff and, and healthy people and healthy families, and he shared that with us. However, Mr. Clark did not share any of the cost information of his health insurance. I attended the Personnel and Governance Committee meeting when he did share that, and unfortunately, I was very shocked. It's a significant impact on employees. It's going to change a family out of pocket from 200 to an increase of $1,800, $2,000 for the first year, and that will continue. It has, it's not as large of an impact for employees who have that larger salary, but for a lot of us who have a smaller salary, and I know I am a single paycheck family, it really is going to be a huge impact. I hate to have to decide between feeding my family and getting the medical care. Some of the near, or districts that were in the comparison that we saw also paid a higher percentage of that deduct, or the, the insurance. They paid a bigger portion than we, we do. We, employees pay 20% and, and the district pays 80. Those schools, some of the school districts were paying like 87 for the premiums for their employees. The other part of this is health insurance for many years was something we had a voice in. It was part of our benefits, part of our negotiation of, of what was our, our income and our benefits for families. We had a voice, we made those decisions, and it impacted the raises that we received. And now it feels like we don't have a voice, and that really makes me sad, because like myself, I know so many other employees realize the situation that the district is in. Our families are in those same situations. We would cherish the opportunity to work together and try and find something that would meet in the middle, that would provide some cost savings from the district, but would not so negatively hit our families and our employees. That's what I'd like to share with the board. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
So then with that, move on to business services. Mr. Clark with health insurance recommendation.
Janice, would you like to join us? So I'm going to ask Janice Wawer from the Insurance Center to join us. She's the agent for the health insurance plan, and in fact, all the group insurance benefit plans we have. She is also a resource person for the Health Insurance Review Committee that Mrs. Peterson referred to. So she's go-to when it comes to technical and data sets. So I think you'll find many of the points that I'm going to present on to be the same ones that Brenda shared. Brenda's been very helpful to the committee and throughout the process. She talked about the interest she has in this topic, and unlike some people who are interested in something but don't step forward and do something about it, Brenda always attended our meetings. Last year, when we made the changes to the health insurance plan, and we had those input and information sessions, Brenda was at every one of those as well. So great sincerity and genuineness in what, when she says, this is important to her, and she, she's one of those people who does something about it then, too. So this is the health insurance recommendation that administratively we're advancing. I need to say that the charge to the Health Insurance Review Committee was never to develop a specific recommendation. It was to study the very things that were mentioned earlier. These changes are very difficult, and it was our thought that we should make sure to get the input, understand the needs, and then develop a recommendation based upon those. But even at the outset, shared directly with the committee and reviewed even by our Personnel and Governance Committee, it was not that group's charge to... Yes?
I'm very sorry, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Good, I haven't gone too far. Thank you. So just a point of clarification on this. Here is the committee purpose. This was the starting point and, and the outcome that that group was to pursue. Review and provide feedback on a multiple-year direction to improve effectiveness of the group health insurance plan. The one word in there that I point out is direction, because we had some discussion on that at the very beginning. We set a plan, a multiple-year plan, and the group said, "That's too specific. It makes it seem like you're going to be locked in. Can we identify it as a direction, knowing how dynamic health insurance is and how dynamic the needs of employees are?" So that was the one word in that purpose statement that received the most discussion. The committee completed five steps. Those are outlined for you here. I won't read them to you. I will tell you that I'll be using this outline then to present to you. It's the same outline that was used by that committee. It's the same format that we'll present to you. I want to note for the board that you had received information in advance. Much of this is the same as what you received. What I have done, though, is since last week, when those materials went out, continued to work on this issue. When you see the background change from white to yellow on the screen, what you're going to find is that's a slide you haven't seen before tonight. And I've tried to identify those and call those out. They are all included in the handout that you have with three slides per page, though. Little bit different than what you received last week. So we're going to start by verifying the need to take action, which was the first task that the review committee looked at as well. This chart illustrates the growth in health insurance premium rates, the family premium rates in the district over this 12-year period. 255%, 21% annually on average. You know it lasts three years, some changes there? Those are changes that came about because of actions taken by employee groups. You remember the actions taken by our teachers several years ago to make some changes to the plan? Actions taken by other employee groups as well. The administrators, the secretaries group, in fact, was one of those groups that some years ago changed insurance carrier from WA Insurance Trust to WCA. And those types of activities are those that have affected the premium rates that were previously increasing at 20% a year. Committee reviewed what's the impact of those premium increases on the net pay of employees. We looked at, this is an example with teachers. I have an example I'll share with you also for custodial maintenance employees, but the committee looked at all groups, looked at secretaries, looked at educational assistants, bus drivers. Who am I leaving out? Custodians? Anyway, they looked at every group. And what this illustration shows is how a 21% increase for this group, remember the previous number was an average for all groups? For this group, the rate went up 21% over the time period. The wages went up 3% per year over that time period. And then at the bottom of the page, this is the number we were really chasing. How did the increase in health insurance relative to wages affect how much of my wages were consumed by health insurance premium contributions? And as you can see here, more than doubled, almost three times, went from 5.67% of the employees' wages to 14.27% of the wages, employees' wages were dedicated to a health insurance premium, thereby reducing the take-home pay. The illustration on the right-hand side of the page shows for a higher, more highly compensated employee, this was referenced during Mrs. Peterson's, that the impact of health insurance premiums for a person in a higher compensation bracket is less. So 2.95% of the wages used to go, now 7.85. Again, the doubling, nearly tripling effect, but a lower percentage of the overall wages. Here's the example for the custodial maintenance employee, and this illustrates how larger percentages of income are consumed by premiums when your wage rate is lesser compared to the cost of health insurance. As I said, there were a number of examples. There was one example, food service employees, which are very part-time employees, limited hours per day, where if I remember correctly, it was nearly 50% of their wages were going to the cost of health insurance premiums. That employee, by the way, was happy, because she related that her husband is independently employed and they have no access to insurance, and their experience prior to having district health insurance was very high premiums and a $10,000 a year deductible to be able to afford it. So it was just interesting for the committee to hear how somebody paying 50% of their premium was happy to be in that position. So that's the impact that the group studied on employees, and then there's the impact on the school district. So in 97, 98 school year, 5.5% of the district's budget was dedicated to health insurance. By 2008, that had doubled. 10.54% of the district's budget was dedicated to insurance. And extrapolating that forward, if the same trend continued, if there were no changes, then over 20% of the school district's budget in 2019, 20 would be dedicated to health insurance. The rest of the pie is used to meet all other forms of needs in the district. Again, this slide is one now that has a yellow background, so this is new to tonight. And as I'm presenting some information here in the next few slides, we need to understand that the employer cost related to health insurance is really a combination of the district's premium contribution and any HRA or HSA contributions. Some employers, including school districts, have moved to that strategy where they use a health reimbursement account or a health savings account as a way to reimburse employees for a portion of the out-of-pocket costs they may realize. So that's a real cost of offering a health insurance plan. Other costs that could be included in the annual insurance cost would be the employer cost of offering wellness assessments and/or coaching activities. You'll see later on in our presentation that we think that's an investment that should be included in our recommendation. $84 per per... Eighty-four dollars per participant is what we're anticipating that annual cost to be. In addition to the HRA plan cost itself, so if you had a $500 HRA contribution, you have to pay fees to administer those, so that is the employees submit for their reimbursements. You have someone overseeing that plan. Those cost about fifty-six dollars per participant. So when you look at the employer's cost, these are examples of the employer's cost that should be considered. As I move forward here and talk about employer costs, I'm going to leave out the other costs. I'm going to only be talking about premium contribution and HRA or HSA contributions. So in this school year, those employees that are on a single plan in West Salem, La Crosse, and Onalaska, and these are the near neighbor school districts that the Health Insurance Review Committee said that they'd ask us to look at, this is what the employer pays annually for health insurance. So you can see West Salem there, about $7,500, $6,871 in La Crosse. And Onalaska, the low, at $5,625. And then the average of those near neighbors is listed. That's on a single plan. That's what they're paying in HRA and/or premiums, whether that's at eighty-seven percent or eighty percent. Onalaska, for example, like us, School District of Holman pays eighty percent. West Salem and La Crosse, I believe, pay eighty-seven-point-five percent premium contribution. So this takes into account the contribution rate that Mrs. Peterson was referring to earlier. And you can see here the family side of the cost. The order doesn't change, which isn't surprising. There's oftentimes a relationship between the single and the family premium. And then I'll infill here with what Holman's contributions are. On a single plan, our contributions are $7,776, and on a family plan, $17,616. And fitting into this concept of current condition, current circumstance, this is information that needs to be shared with the board. How are we paying compared to others? How are, that pie that I showed, how does our pie compare to the pie that other districts might have? Moving to next year, if we assume fifteen percent increases for West Salem and Onalaska as well as Holman, we don't know that, but some preliminary information is suggesting those are the types of rate increases that might be seen. La Crosse is at zero. That's because theirs is known. They made some pretty dramatic changes to their health insurance plan design to achieve a zero percent increase in their premium rates for next year. So if you went back to the previous slide, you'd see the La Crosse numbers exactly the same. And so if we assume those changes, then you can see where next year, our premium, our annual cost would be compared to the others. So comparing to the average, for example, what is that, $1,500 per employee on single? And comparing to the family plan, $3,800... Am I doing that correctly, approximately? More that we pay for our insurance plan here in Holman. So that would be information regarding the need to take action. Then the committee moved to, well, what do we really want from our health insurance plan? It's one thing to look at what others are doing, but what do we want our insurance plan to accomplish for us? And then the other thing that came right on the heels of that was, well, what are the gaps between what we want our plan to do for us and what we're currently accomplishing with our health insurance plan? And this is a summary of those activities. As was mentioned earlier, the employees and the employer had some very common interests in terms of quality and in terms of cost. Because of the employees' premium contribution, any increase in premium has an adverse effect on them and as it does for the district. Employees were very concerned about out-of-pocket costs. Employees, employer was looking at other costs. Anything in green on this, in the end, was evaluated as something we're doing pretty well. We're actually achieving what we want our plan to accomplish for us. Those things that are in red represent those areas where, geez, maybe things aren't as close to what we want as we'd like. There is interesting interplay between these because while we don't want the premium to go up, one of the primary strategies used to keep the premiums down is to increase the out-of-pocket cost. One of the nice things about a wellness initiative is that not only does it give you healthier employees, it reduces the amount of services you have to access. And premiums, and you'll see later, one of the factors that drive premiums is how much you utilize the plan. And so this is one reason why wellness, you'll see later on, is one of those initiatives that we've included. I do want to spend just a moment talking about the coverage access and coverage eligibility. The first two under quality for employees, because that was a little bit confusing for some. So coverage access is viewed as a strength by the district and employees because ninety-seven percent, five-hundred-and-ninety-six of our six-hundred-and-fifteen employees are in fact eligible for district health insurance. And so that was viewed as a strength. Coverage eligibility was viewed as a concern for a couple of reasons. First was the affordability of family coverage. The second was coverage eligibility for domestic partners. Going back to coverage eligibility, affordability for families. So sixty-seven percent of those employees, I mentioned earlier how many are eligible, or four-hundred-and-eleven of our employees are receiving, eligible and receiving eighty percent family health insurance. So the largest portion of our employees are getting that benefit. But of the remaining employees, forty-seven are choosing fifty-six percent paid family coverage, and that was viewed as a burden. That is, forty-four percent of that premium, this gets back to that employee I was talking about. That's viewed as a burden for those employees. And that's why eligibility, you might not think that when you think eligibility. That's why eligibility ended up being identified as an area that we could improve on. Making family coverage more affordable. See, the issue is not just that they have to pay forty-four percent, but that our premium's so high that they can't afford the premium. And that serves as part of the foundation for some of the recommendations we're making as well. This I wouldn't ask you to read on the screen because the numbers are small. I present this, this is the data that I was just referring to, the number of employees eligible for each of the types of benefits. It's important for you to know that the committee looked at this in detail. In fact, they sent us back and told us to do more work on this to provide more data because they really wanted to understand what people were eligible for and electing in terms of health insurance and how that plays into what we need to do. Janice, jump in here if I'm missing. I'm trying to make good use of time here. The next slide that you'll see was developed to look at what our comparables are. I'm sorry, that doesn't count against the...
Against your time, I know.
Yeah. Bad karma. Bad karma. All right. One more time. I'm going to just ask that we turn that off, because this room's small enough. While it's important that people are home here, that's more distracting. Is this working?
I think so.
So this information, we've referred a number of times to comparable school districts. This is again, those near neighboring school districts. We did look at private sector employers and the plans they have. We set those aside, knowing that under the attract and retain, at least for our teachers group, we really weren't competing with the private sector. That may be not as valid when it comes to some of our support personnel. But these were the primary comparables that we looked at. And here you see the School District of Holman. Note that we have a PPO plan. This plan allows employees to elect from a broad set of providers without incurring any additional out-of-pocket cost. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It's probably the broadest, most flexible type of plan that you can have. Onalaska has a dual-choice HMO on an annual basis. You pick which of the two, either the Gunderson Lutheran or the Mayo Health Systems, which of the two you want to be in, and then you go to that provider. Correct, Janice?
Correct.
La Crosse and West Salem have point-of-service plans. They're much like a PPO plan, although they have three tiers and less flexibility on where you go. Well, I shouldn't say that. You can go where you want, but be prepared to have much higher out-of-pocket costs. And so those are the differences in the plan type. I will mention, you won't see any change recommendations in the plan type because as you remember, some of those things we scored well in, green, isn't a score, were evaluated well on, where that we had great flexibility for our employees. They could pursue proficient providers, they had flexibility in providers. So we did not move to a model that replicates any of these. You'll see that later in the recommendation. I'm wondering to the extent to go through this. We currently have a $100 and $200 deductible and in fact, a $100 for single and $200 maximum out-of-pocket for employees. This means that in terms of deductibles and co-insurance obligations, the employee will never be asked to spend more than $200 a year on insurance. That's different than the co-pays that are listed below because co-pays, even if you reach your maximum out-of-pocket, are the obligation of the employee. Correct, Janice?
Correct.
So you can see our plan. It does have some maximum out-of-pockets if you go out of network. But I will tell you that our network is so broad, it'd be really hard for somebody to find. It'd be an unusual circumstance when someone went out of network here in the Holman School District. You can see our premium rates, $810 and $1,835. And you can see that we're an eighty percent paid premium by the employer. Looking at Onalaska then, they have a $500 deductible. The two behind it means up to two of those per household. So really, it's $1,000 maximum per family. They have ninety percent co-pay. That means that ten percent of the cost of any visit is paid by the employee. They have a maximum out-of-pocket of $1,000, which is ten times greater than ours. A maximum out-of-pocket for a family of $2,000, ten times greater than ours. Well, is it really ten times greater? Because we're already at 200, so the difference would be 1,800 on the family plan. You can see that they're, they have co-pays a little bit higher than ours on prescription drugs and emergency room. And then you can see the premium that they pay. And so earlier when I showed employer cost, you can imagine that large part of the reason Onalaska's lower than us is because of this premium that they pay. They're an eighty percent pay employer as well. La Crosse gets a little bit more full of numbers there. The reason is, we knew at the time we did this what La Crosse's 2013-14 health insurance plan was going to look like. And so we put it on the screen in red. The black numbers are really the year-on-year comparable to the rest of the school districts here. So they have a $500 and $1,000 deductible. They currently have a hundred percent co-pay. They have a $500 maximum out-of-pocket, $1,000 family. You can see there, their prescription drug was a $10 and what they're going to in emergency room. Note what they're going to in 2013-14, which would be the parallel year to what we would be recommending to you later. Staying with the $500 and $1,000 deductible, looking at ninety percent co-pay, $2,000 on a single plan, $4,000 on a family plan, maximum out-of-pocket. That's double what Onalaska has. And then you can see Tier Two and Tier Three. These are the deductibles, co-pays, and out-of-pocket costs if you go to alternative providers. It's not alternative care type thing, it's just a different provider, in different tiers of the network. And then you can see their premium rate. We didn't show in red what La Crosse's is going to be next year because it's going to be exactly the same. The changes they made, black to red, were to fix the premium from 2012-13 to 2013-14. Now you can see, and this was referred to earlier, they pay eighty-seven-point-four percent of the employees' premium. And lastly, West Salem, $1,000 and $2,000 deductibles, ninety percent co-insurance, $1,500 single out-of-pocket, $3,000 family. You can see the office visit co-pays and prescription drug. You can see that under their emergency room visits, it's $100 co-pay and then the employee pays ninety, or pardon me, ten percent, the plan pays ninety percent. Interesting addition here, they have a HRA reimbursement account. So imagine that $1,500 single, maximum out-of-pocket, five-hundred of that being reimbursed through an HRA plan. Assuming the employee gets to that point in their utilization of the plan, the employee doesn't access services, then that reimbursement would not be made. So that really, that $1,500 could be considered a $1,000 maximum out-of-pocket. And the same thing with the family. Rather than $3,000, they're eligible for up to $1,000 HRA contribution. You can see the single and family premium rates and you can see the contribution rates. These things are really important for you to have in your head as a foundation as we start looking, later on, look at, what's the employees' cost? Because the employees' cost is the twenty percent or twelve-point-six percent that they pay in premiums, plus the employees' cost includes the out-of-pocket cost. That is, if they access them, not everybody, but it includes that cost. And then those costs would be offset by an HRA contribution. So later on, when I'm talking about the employees' total cost, keep in mind all those components of a plan because they all have an effect, one way or another, increasing or reducing the employees' cost. Sorry to take so long on that one, but we'll be referring to much of that information later. This is referring to the gap we have in premium, the concern we have about premiums and premium cost. There really are a number of factors that drive premiums. There's a list here. The Health Insurance Review Committee was aware of these things that affect premiums. And as we looked at them, in some cases, we kind of joked about the fact that we don't want to try to control some of those, the age of the employees or the gender of the employees. And all of these, except for the bottom one, are really outside your control. We will not control medical inflation or the introduction of new technology or new treatments in health insurance. All those things drive up health insurance. The only one we can really affect is plan utilization. And so the recommendation focuses on plan utilization. In fact, it focuses on plan utilization in the form of wellness programs, which I talked about earlier. One way to reduce utilization, utilization being a factor that drives up premium cost, is to have employees so healthy, they don't have to utilize the health insurance plan. Theory being that in the end, reduced utilization will reduce the premium cost and save everybody money. Employee and employer will enjoy lower premiums. The same thing can be said for plan designs that promote thoughtful utilization. The same thing can be said for plan designs that promote thoughtful utilization. Right now, we have a plan that private sector and most other school districts aren't using, and the reason they've gone away from the strategy isn't the immediate premium savings. It's because the plan, when the employee is involved in the immediate financial implications of seeking services, those decisions are made differently than when there is no cost. And that's been, Janice can speak to that. That's been evaluated many times over.
Correct. When we look at plan designs and plan options, we really look at what type of an impact it is, not only to the employer for their portion of the premium, but also from the employee's perspective. And by making some plan modifications, I think it will certainly help improve the utilization, the claims activity that we have currently. With our current plan design, with the $100 deductible, maximum out-of-pocket of 100, when we looked at the reports that we received from WCA, that's really equivalent of one office visit. So once an employee or a family member has accessed one office visit per year, the rest of their health care for the remainder of the year is paid at 100%, with the exception of their co-pay's responsibility. So I look at it from a perspective, it's a green light to access health care with really not using sometimes good consumer guides, as far as where to access care and the frequency of it, depending on that individual's medical conditions. And we certainly don't want to stop somebody from accessing care when they have a medical need. We just need to take and look at the utilization reports that we have and make some good decisions on plan modifications that will impact the group as a whole.
So if we go back and look for a moment at that slide we just got done reviewing, what Janice is saying, what I'm saying, is that the lower rates in Onalaska, 38% less, LaCrosse 24% less, West Salem 21% less, have something to do with the higher deductibles, but they also are driven by the lower experience rates that occur because of those higher deductibles and co-pays. So that was gap, what we want and what gaps we have between what we want and what we have. Next was to identify strategies to close the gap and also sequence. And so here's the recommendation, the initial recommendation, because there is a modified recommendation that we're going to present to you tonight. The issue paper itself is actually formed on the initial recommendation that was shared with the Personnel Governance Committee and included in your packet. We've since then listened to some of the input that we've received and made a modification that will be presented tonight. Look for the yellow background on the screen.
So could we just go to that? I mean, if you've got a different modification, let's just go there.
There it is.
Okay. Thank you.
We heard that the cost would be too high in that initial year, particularly based upon not having time to anticipate it and make financial accommodations for it. So what we did was, we took the planned introduction of an HRA reimbursement account in the second year, and we're introducing one half of that in the first year. So it would be $250 on a single, $500 on a family participant. The intent of this is to reduce the personal financial impact to the employee. The district will have to put the money into these HRA reimbursements, but it was a response that we developed to some of the input we've received. I'm sorry.
So Jay, can you, yeah, so on that then, the recommendation continues that you would in 2014-15 do 500 and 1,000?
Correct.
And then in 15-16, there would be the additional, I know that's kind of cut off, but the employer, HRA employer contribution, the second level down there of 500 and 1,000, in addition to, that portion of it would stay, could stay with the employee. The first two years, it would, is that a use it or lose it?
I don't know how much time to spend on these, but since you offer an opportunity, I will spend some time on the HRA. So the HRA reimbursement, which is the top row of HRAs, really is a reimbursement. The employee has to incur the expense. If they incur the expense, then the reimbursement is made. No expense, no reimbursement. The lower part is titled an HRA employer contribution. We're scheduled to introduce that in 15-16, and we're delaying the implementation of that, because the wellness initiatives we're going to implement in the first two years are designed to promote wellness behaviors. In the third year, you start meeting healthy lifestyle standards, and you'd qualify for the $500 single, $1,000 per family, and that'd go into an account whether you incur medical expenses or not. The idea being, if, we've got these people ramped up so that they're so healthy that they don't incur medical costs, if you make it a reimbursement type, they're never going to access it. You're avoiding the very thing you're trying to incentivize. So when you do that type of program, then you have to move to an HRA plan that goes into the account whether you access or not. This is a sheet that you've seen before. There are some things that are highlighted in yellow, so I won't go through this all. This would, this is a 15-minute presentation. I will highlight those things that are in yellow, which you may not have heard previously. We would change one of the benefits in the plan, the chiropractic benefit, currently from 100%. Janice, maybe you can explain this.
Sure. We propose changing the chiropractic benefit. Right now, after the deductible has been met, chiropractic services are paid at 100%. And when we looked at the reports on utilization, they give us what the actual school district's members are utilizing for each different type of service versus the norm with United Healthcare. And the chiropractic benefit for the school district is 240% above the norm. So we felt that there was a need to make a plan modification to start trying to have people be better consumers of some of their care. So the recommendation would be for the chiropractic benefit versus being paid at 100% to implement an office visit co-pay for that service. So we would implement a $25 office visit co-pay for in-network and out-of-network chiropractic services. It doesn't represent any type of a change in premium, and the carrier, when I spoke to them in great length about this, feels it's necessary to make this change to help control future utilization and premium differentials because of the high utilization that we have currently in this particular category.
The other things that are highlighted on this page, in year one, when we presented to the Personnel and Governance Committee and the materials the board had, we talked about the $20,000 of funding available through the WCIA insurance plan, and the question was, what are you going to do with those dollars? And we've identified here then some specifics. Gym membership reimbursements, we introduced that program this year. We'd make it a year-round activity in the upcoming year, again, along the lines of the wellness. Weight loss programs available to employees, education on chronic disease within the district, and smoking cessation programs. Those would be some of the educational incentives that we'd provide, paid by the district, well, actually by the grant. And then those types of things continue in year three, so they were highlighted there in year three. I think that really represents the only changes that we made to that document. Earlier, I said we needed to talk about the employee cost, and what's the impact of these changes on the employee cost. Remember, I talked about the premium amount being a factor, the premium contribution rate, 20% versus 12.6% for other employees, the maximum out-of-pocket, remember that? We're going to include the full maximum out-of-pocket, even though we realize a good number of employees will not meet the $1,000 and $2,000 deductible, or maximum out-of-pocket we're talking about. And then the HRA contribution. We did not include in this comparison the co-pays, and these vary so much by participant and what they access, that we didn't know what number would, how many co-pays would you use in this comparison? So if we look at the employee cost this year in the plan that we have, the employee cost on a single plan, all those things considered, their premium contributions based on our rate, the maximum out-of-pocket cost, those things I just shared, this is the cost incurred by the employee to have health insurance coverage. The next set of numbers, the numbers in blue, will represent what if we had implemented the changes we're talking about for next year in this year? What would the cost of employees have been then? I'm doing it this way, because when you start talking about next year, then you're talking about getting the rate increase involved in there, as well as the effects of the plan changes. I really want to isolate on the effect of the plan change, not what's going to happen with rate increases next year. And that's the impact to employees. So their premium contributions would go down, because the recommendations being advanced reduced the premium by 8.9%. So their premium costs will go down, but their out-of-pocket cost goes up, and then we offset a part of that with the HRA. So this is kind of a net effect of the changes being advanced. I take out what's the change going to be in the increase for next year, because that's going to happen no matter what you decide. Premium rate increase for next year, nothing would happen. So here we're focusing on, the recommendation is to make changes to the plan, what's the impact of that? And so there you have it. There was some talk about the cost impact being $1,800. That's calculated by only focusing on the maximum out-of-pocket and not recognizing an HRA contribution, which people didn't know about, or the reduced premium cost.
Which was, we didn't have an HRA.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Right, till tonight.
So how could you include that? You didn't even know it was part of the proposal. So the rationale for the changes is to control long-term premium costs, that's the plan design changes, and improve long-term affordability for employees, which gets at that eligibility issue. I can't help but mention that we'd have a hard time meeting the affordability test with our current plan under the Affordable Care Act, because it's such a high premium cost plan. Improves eligibility by keeping premiums more affordable. We are recommending the addition of the domestic partners coverage, and we're preserving some of those things that were identified as important. Convenient access to providers, proficient providers, employees can select and go where they would like as opposed to an HMO plan. We think these are the things, when we look at those near neighbors, that allow us to continue to attract and retain employees. It is a change from what they have now, but comparatively, I think we can still attract and retain. We think the wellness programs will help to perpetuate what are really low absenteeism rates in our district and maintain highly productive employees. Timelines and sequence, that was the last thing on the list. So here's what is laid out for you. I think most critical is, where are we tonight? Where are we tonight? That's June 10th, you're reviewing. Be looking for board approval on June 24th. Employees would be notified of an open enrollment period for the health and dental insurance plan. We'd have new plan documents available. You have to have those prepared, so that when you present open enrollment, the employees know, "Open enrollment in what?" And then, at the same time, we'd roll out flexible spending account information, because it is important with the additional out-of-pocket cost, for the employees to be able to use the flexible spending account to get those dollars on a pre-tax basis. And so we want to, that's why we had a delay in our flexible spending account this summer, so that we could preserve the opportunity for employees to exercise some choices here. And there you have it. Then August 5th and 9th would be enrollment in flex. August 1st to 31st would be the open enrollment in the health and dental plans. This is really focusing on the health. And then the renewal is on September 1st. Thank you so much for your time and attention. That is a lot of time, but this is a very, very important issue. And so you need to, as you move forward in making a decision, have all the information that we can present you with. So, thank you.
Yes, and thank you for presenting that information, and I think hearing some of the comments that had been raised and some of the concerns and responding to it, I guess whether, you know, that is adequate, I think we'll have some conversation here as a board. We asked Jay to come forward and bring this to us, so that we can discuss this. If there are any other further changes that we want to see, we would certainly have him research some of those. So, looking for comments, discussion?
Will we get what you presented, the changes in the printed form that we can read? Because the font is so tiny.
Yeah. Dr. Carlson and I talked about that today, and what we'd like to do is, it's not just the school board, but it's the employees who should have access to all that information. So what we'd like to do is, as quickly as possible tomorrow, get it all posted. This is how we did it with the last year's input and information sessions. We just posted all the information. So we're going to try to get that done tomorrow. I don't, we haven't talked about, is there a link on the bottom of the homepage, right next to the employee handbook, so it's easy to find? Or, we haven't talked about those things, but for you and Anita, we can send one right to you, but...
And in addition, for board members, we'll get this, can, still working on it even this afternoon, so didn't have a chance to get it on the Dropbox. Those of you utilizing Dropbox, we'll be doing that as well tomorrow morning.
So other questions, comments?
I have a question, just a clarification question. So what was presented tonight, I do need to absorb, I need to look at this and study it further, but I'm understanding that choices have been made right now for a plan that's going for, that is recommended, is that correct? And then the sheets that are going to come out that we saw tonight, and employees will get tomorrow or the day after or whatever, the economic impact, that'll be spelled out for them?
Well, as it is in this present-
Have I just got that correct, though? I mean, there has been, there have been some choices made that you're wanting us to consider, yes? So I should look at those choices, right? Thank you. And then, and then at the same time that we saw them tonight, and other employees will see them tomorrow, we'll all digest that and have input. And then, what are the avenues that employees have input, or will your committee, I'm sorry for that-
Health Insurance Review Committee?
Thank you. Does that committee reconvene when it does have this information? And then there'll be more discussion of that? Or is there not a reconvening of that committee?
There is not a scheduled reconvening of that committee. That committee was not charged with developing a recommendation, but all the good work that they did to this point in time.
So we won't really know what employees think about this, right?
Oh, um, I, some of the changes that we've advanced are because employees have, so employees, my experience has been, it doesn't take a committee to get employee input. In fact, we have received some employee input, and Brenda will tell you that the Health Insurance Review Committee was very active in communicating with employees. After each of our three meetings, we put together a summary of what happened, and we sent it out to employees, and we asked them for input. Now, the input was lean at that point in time, and maybe that's our human nature, that, until something-
When the economic impact comes out, I'm expecting there might be some input or reaction. And I'm just asking that, because that's just information for myself as a board member also. Cost-effectiveness for a district is a big thing, but then are there choices that employees have for helping with cost impact? I mean, what would, would they rather do, A or B? Doesn't mean we vote that way or not, but it's just more information for me.
Yeah.
And I would be really interested in something. No, we don't need a committee for that, but there's also a difference in reaching out to employees to say, "So what do you think?" And I think that's a good thing to do. We're all on the same side, and I'd want to know eventually what they think.
Kate, those are great points. We had 12 members on that committee. Not everybody could attend every meeting, but did those 12 represent the whole? And I always know that when I get calls, that it may not represent- And I always know that when I get calls that it may not represent the whole either.
Right.
So we tried to do a good job of understanding what the needs were, what were the most important components, what we were doing well. Could we have missed? We could have missed. Maybe people would say, "Go to an HMO? This is crazy."
Right. And I also know that some districts have surveyed their members to see, "Would you rather A or B or C?" And so already before you make a plan, you kind of know what's important to people. Because we represent so many different people. We represent people who, some of these figures that are going up, I know that's such a huge percentage of their paycheck and their paycheck to paycheck. They're basically in poverty, some of our people, or working a second job. So it's an important vote to look at increases. That's all I'm saying. And for me to help empathize with who my people are as a board member is really so important to me. It's really so important to me. It's way different than someone who makes a really high paycheck compared to someone who's working from paycheck to paycheck. And I just feel like as a voting member, I need to hear what they have to say. Nobody's going to say they want costs to go up, but I wonder if they'd have viewpoints of choices and columns that they'd be willing to pay more for. That's all.
Any other comments, questions?
I hand-hold her out a little, yeah. I appreciate all the work you guys did and I understand what you're saying about reducing the out-of-pocket. If I understand it right, to Brenda's point, she's paying eighteen hundred dollars maximum, maximum out-of-pocket.
That would be the increase from a two hundred dollar maximum out-of-pocket to a two thousand.
Your proposal, you have the fund, if she, if they approach that eighteen hundred dollars, they get five hundred dollars refund back. This takes it down to thirteen hundred. The third year, they get five hundred dollars, an additional five hundred dollars, right? And that takes it down to?
No, an additional two fifty to get five hundred. Well, no, I'm sorry.
But keep track of other changes that are happening in the plan as you move to those later years because we're looking at changes to co-pays at different tiers, benefits. So there, there's a number of factors that are interplaying. I did not do the calculation in all the future years and honestly, we're not tonight asking the board to approve the future years.
No.
We're trying to give an idea of where they're going. We won't on the 24th be asking the board to approve the multiple years. Employees said, "We'd like to know where it's going in the future rather than each June or July or even May telling us," you know, that, that, that kind of thing, so.
Mr. Dunlap, I think your numbers, the eighteen hundred, you subtracted the five hundred, thirteen hundred. There was also a projected, the savings, the cost savings, I think what I, in the presentation, three hundred, three fifty, something like that, that would be, putting that nine hundred some dollar estimated cost.
Right. Yeah, that gets at that slide that I was presenting that says the net impact of this to the employees on a family plan is about nine hundred dollars. Nine hundred dollars is a lot of money.
We've been talking about it for a long time, that private sector and the public sector, as you can see by the other school districts, can't, we can't continue to follow the ramp that we're following with insurance. Insurance rates are going to continue to go up fifteen or twenty percent. Something has to be done. We can't maintain that type of, it takes bigger and bigger chunk of the budget all the time. And unfortunately, it's not, if it was something we control, it would be different, but it's something that we, that we can control, especially the insurance business itself. We're trying to make it as a little, as least painful as we can to each employee, but understand that the, not only the school district employees, but the private sector and every one of us on the board that work other places are, are going through the same type of thing. So I know that doesn't make you feel much better, but it's true. And I like the idea that Jake and Dr. Carlson came back with a plan to reimburse you another five hundred dollars off the top to, to help reduce that pain, but unfortunately, it's going to be painful for everyone, I think.
Other comments, questions?
I just believe you also said that some of this is going to be driven by the Affordable Care Act affordability standards that are coming down the road as well. That's going to have an impact for some of those older traditional type of plans that are almost going to force some changes with some of that to stay with the Affordable Care Act too that's coming down the road.
I can't believe that, and I'm, I'm not a soothsayer, but I can't believe that Affordable Care Act is going to come through and insurance rates are going to stay close. I would expect insurance rates to go up exponentially from fifteen percent to twenty, twenty-five percent when that gets implemented. It's going to be scary for everyone. We'll get through it together, I guess.
Anyone else?
I, I just, I wanted to thank Brenda because I know it's, it, it takes a lot to go up and speak on behalf of quite a few people, I would imagine. And I appreciate you coming to the Personnel and Governance Committee and giving us your input. When I look at these figures, when I, in three years to go from a maximum out-of-pocket of two hundred dollars to five thousand dollars for a single parent who's probably at the very low end of the salary scale in the school district, I wish I had a magic wand. I wish I, I wish I had an easy answer. I think that putting money in the HRA is a step in the right direction, but I, I don't know how we can ask someone to choose between eating and going to the doctor. And I understand, Janet, what you said about the higher deductible means less doctor visits and it equals a lower premium and that makes total sense to me, but to make doctor visits and that higher deductible out of reach for a family, there's a fine line between totally out of reach and, and using that higher deductible as a tool to help drive healthcare costs down, but making it out of reach and driving someone to the poor house or to not seek medical care when they might need it and they have kids who need it, it just leaves me scratching my head. I don't know, I don't know what to do, but I agree with Kate that I, I'd like to hear, like Brenda said, they may have some answers, they'd like to give input and see if they can come up with some suggestions. You know, I don't have an answer. I wish I did. I just know that it's awfully hard to, to say, "Yeah, it looks like a great plan for somebody to go from two hundred to two thousand dollars in one year." I can't do that. So I need time to digest this and I would like to look over the figures and the papers when we get them to.
Can I add just something to, if you don't mind? When we look at the, we're looking at the max out-of-pocket numbers as I know worst-case scenario, and actuarial, every plan that we look at over the number of years I've been in this industry, it's twenty percent typically of the membership actually are utilizing the plan on an ongoing basis. The other eighty percent use it either for wellness or an occasional illness or injury. So those are unpredictable. We do have the plan designed with the office visit co-pay, which means that they only pay the twenty or twenty-five at the time of service versus having to reach the deductible or max out-of-pocket. So we try to accommodate that. With the average office visit in La Crosse being a hundred and fifty-eight dollars, the members are either going to be paying twenty or twenty-five and that doesn't make any difference if it's a primary or specialist, which are usually three to four times that. The wellness component of the plan, meaning if they go in for their annual preventative care and wellness, does not apply towards a co-pay or deductible that's paid at a hundred percent. So we don't want to discourage people from accessing care. We do truly want them to have their wellness because we hopefully, if there is something going on, we can catch in the early stages before it becomes such a, a chronic disease. We also have the direct contract with the Neighborhood Family Clinics, which are sponsored by Dr. Ted Thompson, and we have a special contract. If they go to any of his clinic facilities, everything is paid at a hundred percent. There's no office visit co-pay, no deductible or coinsurance. So we're trying to provide choices so that, for affordability as well, but also taking into consideration how everything is going to either be an impact on the employer group or for the employees. We certainly understand both sides of it.
Thank you.
Do you know what, I, I heard you say, maybe I missed it, but what percent of a population of insured people like ours would get close to the eighteen hundred dollars or two thousand dollars?
Well, I don't know that number exactly, Gary, but looking at the reports that we received, just in one particular category kind of pinpoints where the utilization is and it's under what we call chronic disease impact. And of that number, seventeen percent of the membership fall into that category and there are six different medical conditions in that category. And of that, that represents forty percent of our total claims. So in that area, when we talk about education, that's an area where we certainly need to focus on educating employees that are in that component and that means that, that seventeen percent are utilizing one of the six chronic, it could be more. And one particular category where we've talked about is the high blood pressure. We have one point, just over, just under one point two million dollars in claims that are just in that one particular category. So maybe a change in activities as far as maybe some wellness incentives that focus on that particular chronic disease would certainly help us. So you, the actuarial studies typically show about twenty percent of the total membership are what drives up your cost and this pretty well kind of confirms that.
Any other questions? Lisa, did you, you're looking at me, wanted to say something or?
Well, I mean, I think the biggest thing that impacted me was obviously the single-parent, low-income, high-cost and wanting to be able to come to the table and kind of talk and give some feedback about that. I guess that, that was the thing that kind of spoke to me the most.
Okay, great. Well, and, and I agree, I, I look at the review committee form that you did with the red, things identified in red and I think you look at cost and when you talk about lowest premium and lowest out-of-pocket, those two things are really kind of opposite of each other and it's, so it's hard. And I suspected, I suspect that if you had presented that committee with those numbers and given them maybe an opportunity to prioritize, you maybe would have, you know, not had the reaction we did initially to what your proposal was because out, you know, the lowest out-of-pocket versus lowest premium, I mean, there is an interest by the district, obviously, to keep the premium low, but I think for the employee, there is also an interest there, but they kind of are in opposite.
They are.
Yeah, contradiction, or they contradict each other to have that happen. So I did some, I asked, I think Jay, I don't know if you completed that, but I, I asked for the impact just on that family. I just wanted to take one number because we could be here forever. The impact of that out-of-pocket, the worst-case scenario, and it ranges from thirteen percent of our average, if you take the associations and take their average salary, some associations that could potentially impact their salary, thirteen percent, that eighteen hundred is thirteen percent, to all the way down to two percent of their salary. And someone made the comment that depending on what level of, of income you have, it may, that eighteen hundred dollars may be seen at a different, having a different impact. And so even if one of our employees is being, you know, impacted so negatively, I think we have to consider that and take a look at that. The options that you give for some of those clinics, I think, thank you, because not everyone would do that. I do appreciate your looking into the H, SAA, HRA, whatever those things are called earlier, because I couldn't understand the initial proposal to start immediately and the, instead of working our way slower. In some districts, I've seen them at, you know, even doing it even more slowly, but I think we had originally heard that there's a potential for our premiums to go up twenty percent and I think right now you're estimating fifteen. And were you estimating with this change, a lower percentage with these changes?
Right, it would be about nine percent. The fifteen would be offset by the, pardon me.
The fifteen would be is if nothing changed?
The fifteen if nothing changed, it's about nine percent. The changes that we're having should be about a six percent increase, if the fifteen percent holds to be true.
And even though you did share for us the, what the impact would be of the current contract, if you have that number, if you're able to estimate that number, I still would be interested in seeing if no changes took place, so, and we saw a fifteen percent increase in premium, but we didn't change anything, what would the impact be to the employee and to the district? And then versus what is the impact going to be based on your nine percent increase? But yet, increase in out-of-pocket if you're following me and both?
Again, so really then we look at the impact, the premium increase for next year is going to happen.
Right, but whether it happens at fifteen or at nine is dependent on-
Right, the question is, yeah, yeah.
I just would be curious so that I really know what the potential impact's going to be and I think of doing nothing or of doing what you're recommending, I think that would be helpful.
Those numbers can, taking into account their estimates, but those numbers can be generated.
So is there anything else that you would like to see? And then, yeah, I, you know, it's like buying an automobile. You could say, "Well, what kind of automobile would you like? Oh, you'd like this and you'd like air and you'd like this." But then you get the sticker shock and sometimes in retrospect, then you have to go back. And I wish we would have had an opportunity to do that with employees, to say, "Well, these are the priorities, these are the things you've identified as your priorities and things of interest, but this is what it's going to cost." And there might have been a different discussion.
Well, we had, we had, we had twenty years of negotiations where they stated through negotiations what was important to them. I mean, we should know what's important to them by what they negotiated and what they wanted and what they didn't want in the contract language. And that should have indicated to us what was important and what wasn't important. And I think we have that history, we should, we can't ignore that, I don't think.
Right. I just think with giving them partial information and not giving them the full thing and the numbers, I think it, you know, the, the numbers are important.
And I think too, I agree, Gary, you know, for a long time, insurance rates were at a certain rate and employees made choices for, for things, but in the last just five years, things have changed drastically. So new choices, I think, are made by most reasonable employees and, and it might be a different scene than it was maybe fifteen years ago or twenty years ago because of the skyrocketing rates, you know.
Yeah, but they are skyrocketing. You have to remember too, that, that as a board, that if we, if we spend that much more on healthcare, that it's going to have to come from someplace. If, if we have to, do we want, do we want to make the choice of raising student-teacher ratio by two students in order to fund this? Or, you know, or cut something else, cut the raise off or it has to come from somewhere. Just keep that in mind.
One last comment because I've heard the reference a couple of times. We did tell the Health Insurance Review Committee and the employees in the district as a whole that we were going to move to a plan comparable to these other districts and did share with the Health Insurance Review Committee what the out-of-pocket costs were to these. So the arithmetic of going from a two hundred dollar family deductible to a two thousand dollar, while it wasn't put together in the detailed presentation here, the Health Insurance Review Committee was told that.
As far as what's happening with the other school districts?
They knew what was happening with the other school districts and we told them that the plan would include moving towards comparable plans. So, yes, I didn't lay out in front of them, let me, let me quantify that for you, two thousand dollars, two hundred dollars, here's the difference. But they were told that, so I, we didn't walk away from the meeting saying, "Well, okay, thank you, we'll go do something." We, we outlined what the wellness would be, what the premium and costs would be.
Thank you. Okay, so we will be getting some more information and continue to look at this. It will be on the next agenda, or the agenda for our next meeting. And reports and discussion are next. I would call upon the board members in the order of the roll call, ask them to present any committee reports or comments that they have. Mr. Gittens?
I'm going to let Mr. Dunlap take care of our finance committee.
Mrs. Jagazinski?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, Mrs. Mayor?
I did report to West Salem, the annual convention of school board members. Yes, exactly, CISA. We had a guest speaker, Laura, I think it's pronounced Pinsonay, I'm not sure, who, who gave a lengthy presentation on, I think, what our school board knows about already. It was about report card and we're so well-informed on that, but I thought to myself, we're either really well-informed or, you know, ahead of the game or whatever. So that was the biggest part of things. Officers were elected. I do have the annual report, if anybody's interested in that. I can also give you a website that you can access that if you'd like the information on that. But other than that, that's all I have. But other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Menninger?
Just a couple of things this evening. First off, as I look at Agenda Item nine point three, I do notice that there are only three more school board meetings between now and the start of football practice.
Oh, stop.
Seriously? Really?
Summertime. I also wanted to just talk about something that's been in the news in the state quite a bit lately, and that is the school vouchers. And I wanted to just mention for the record that I am a twelve-year attendee of private schools, graduated from a private high school. And I have, as a graduate, I have some concerns about the voucher program. Not only are they taking dollars away from, you know, our tax dollars for private schools, you know, they do have an effect of having an impact on the public schools' budget. You know, they are not subject to the same standard scrutinization and oversight that the public schools are. But there's also something else that I think we might be missing in this discussion, and that although here in this area, we have some very fine private schools. But what's to say that a new school that isn't started, that's a private school, maybe doesn't follow our same beliefs or core values? And your tax dollars now could potentially be going to those schools as well. And when you look at us here on the school board, we are a public body. We are elected by the officials, so in a sense, the taxpayers do have control over how we spend those dollars. But that control would now be going away because you would have really no oversight into how those dollars are spent. So with that, I obviously am strongly in opposed to any expansion of the school voucher program in the state of Wisconsin, and as a private school graduate, I am opposed to expansion of the private school vouchers in Wisconsin.
Thank you, Mr. Menninger. Mrs. Collins?
I just wanted to report that I did end up going to Academy on the Prairie to visit their open house, and it was awesome. It was really neat. I had gotten one of the student guided tours and had a chance to speak with about three or four of the students just by myself, and sat down and talked about their experience there and where they started, and, you know, soon to be graduating some of them, and how much progress they've made because they were able to have a situation for learning that really accommodated their needs. It was amazing, and, yeah, I've got some people that I've been, I'm a social worker at the county, and so I've been talking about some of the neat things that I've been learning about the Academy on the Prairie. And so I think there's some other folks that are real interested in looking at their, that program for their kids.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you made it out. I don't know if any other annual, Dr. Carlson was out there, but.
Joe was there.
Oh, Joe was, okay. Well, see, Joe, you could have reported on that.
Well, I figured, I figured the newcomer handled it much better. I'm not a talker, I'm a thinker.
But, you know, it's great, I appreciate it, because, you know, people, I'm glad you were able to make it, but I could have never made it, but I really want to be out there because it's a great program.
I think now that the subject has been brought up.
Would you like to share something?
We were asked to share, and that was the sign for that old school, should be torn down, and the sign for the new school should be put up. So that was what we were both asked to do, and I presented it to Dale, and Dale is going to look into it.
Yeah, we really should look at, look at that. And then I think it, you know, I know that it's not, we have a philosophy for our police liaison officer, but I think we have some issues with that person being able to be out there because it's not in the village, and so those are some things that I know that.
Tony.
Yeah, it's the Town of Onalaska, and so it can't, yeah.
I mean, law enforcement jurisdiction.
Right, it's more that our police liaison is who is supposed to be in the classroom and doing positive things with students, encouraging that relationship. They can't really travel out there because it's out of their jurisdiction.
We should maybe have a police liaison from the county sheriff's department.
That won't happen.
We, we have visited with Officer Hickey, and again, there are opportunities to make him available, at least for educational purposes and so on, to work with, and he is more than willing to do that. But, yeah, ultimate jurisdiction does not lie within the village.
Mr. Dunlap?
I was going to speak for Joe, but obviously, he can speak for himself. On the insurance issue, I'd just like to let everyone know that I feel the same pain that you all feel in my own job, and I hope we can do something to help. I'm sure we can, we can work something out. We had a very exciting finance committee meeting tonight before this meeting, and we're saying goodbye to Jason, was, was very sad, and we had cake and alcohol and stuff. It was really not.
That's against the policies.
Oh, I mean, we didn't do that. And then we, and in the finance committee meeting, we began working in earnest on the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget, and got some baseline numbers down for that. I wanted to thank Mr. Vogler and Dr. Carlson for the great eighth grade celebration. That's a great class coming into high school, and it's going to be a lot of fun, and Mr. Bear's going to have his hands full with that group, I think. It's a, it's a nice group, and it's one of my first grandchild coming into your high school, so good luck with that. And then I'd like to remember, remind the public that even though schools are closed, there's lots of activities going on in the schools, in and around the schools with basketball camps and so on, so drive carefully and watch out for our students all summer. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap. I just have a couple of things. New committees will take effect July first, and I will get those to Christina or Dr. Carlson this week. I have had a couple of conversations with folks, so those are ready to go. The community collaboration is continuing to see progress. We've been meeting, we will be meeting, continue to meet. We have another subcommittee this week, and then next week, I think we have, tomorrow, do we have that? Yeah, there's a subcommittee on the site evaluation, and then the larger committee. It's really great to see the Village of Holman and the Town of Onalaska, the Town of Holland, and the school district, and then those three movers and shakers, Lori and Mary Lynn, and Dan McHugh come together and kind of lead us. We've got some folks from the Turbo that are assisting us with trying to bring those groups that aren't necessarily used to working together, together and finding some consensus, and we've got a case statement and those kind of things, and trying and making sure that we continue to focus on the students, so that's a positive. I will say that unfortunately, I am concerned a little bit about the, some of the discussions by the village related to the TIF districts. And we had been involved in that committee a few years ago, and the TIF district that is currently exists north of us, initially, it was supposed to be mostly commercial and that kind of development with residential development really targeted to come toward the end of it. And the, it's moving through the village right now that there's, it sounds like a project of someone who I know and really like, he's the developer, but it's primarily residential, which in a TIF district, the school district will receive the value of taxes on the day that it became a TIF district. But, so we supported that because of all the commercial improvements that we thought might happen, so that in, because with the commercial, you're not going to see the students. However, if they have residential coming first, then there's a potential to see students coming, and we will still receive that same value. So it's just a concern when you see that in the paper, and then also, there's a new, newly being established TIF district that they're talking about as well. So I, you know, we really probably need to have a conversation with the village about that and just share our concerns so that they can be, I know they need to, in order to establish a new TIF district, have a representative from the school district on their committee, and I would just share that depending on the timing of their meetings, I might peg one of the board members to be a member on that committee, and so we'll have to have that discussion. So that is all I have. Moving on to board meeting schedule, as Tim said, we've got three meetings before August, the June twenty-fourth, July eighth, July twenty-second, and so those upcoming board meetings. On August twenty-sixth, we have our annual meeting. So we begin that evening with a regular board meeting, which runs from six to seven. Then from seven to eight, we have our budget hearing, and then from eight, after eight, we do our annual meeting. And so as that approaches, if you have any questions, I know, Lisa, if you have any questions on that, since it will be your first time, feel free to reach out to Dr. Carlson or myself, we can answer questions for you. So next item is consent agenda items. Are there any items at this time that you would like to have pulled out and considered separately? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Not a discussion, but it's just always with sadness to see all the resignations, but I noticed Mr. Wopat on there as well, and he's come before the board several times, and certainly sad to see all those, but especially someone who's been a good advocate and come before the board on numerous occasions.
Yeah, I would concur. Any other comments or discussion questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items as presented, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Then executive session. Mrs. Mayor?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education moves to executive session as per Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C for the purpose of reviewing base wage negotiations.
Is there a second? Is there a second, Mr. Gittens? Okay, then the roll call.
Mr. Gittens? Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Jagosinski?
I will not be here.
Yes, Mrs. Jagosinski has to excuse herself.
Myself, yes. Mr. Menninger?
Mr. Menninger?
Mr. Menninger?
Ms. Collins?
And Mr. Dunlap.
Okay, we will go into executive session in five minutes.